All right, 6:30. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is April 16th. And we're going to move forward. Attorney Tree, we're not sure if she's going to arrive due to an issue in her family, a medical issue. So we'll move forward. And before we begin, I'm going to go over-- Yes, sir?
This is the 18th. This is the 18th of April.
That is.
What did you say?
It is.
Yeah.
It's--I apologize. It's the 18th. Wow. I hope I get through this week okay.
Geez, somebody's listening.
Yep. That was a test. You passed. No, but thank you. And we'll go over some of the ground rules by-- excuse me, this board operates under. It sounds like I have a little laryngitis, but sort of. And hopefully it goes away soon. All right. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in a sequence in which they appeared in a public notice. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. And any other interested parties present at this hearing shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. Members of the board may direct appropriate questions at any time during the meeting. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within 90 days after the public hearing has been closed. All three members of the board must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for--excuse me--in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, to my right is Mr. Randy Haglen, to my left, Mr. Mel Cornet, and we have our third member, David Ante, are with us in the event we need him. Because during the case, Mr. Haglen is going to have to excuse himself for a short time for a prior meeting that he's committed to. Okay, the meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? And be it known, there's no objections. And my last request, if you do have a cellphone, please silence it so it will not go off and distract during the meeting. Okay. The first case we're going to do this evening is an application or special permit for 48 Chapel Street. That is on behalf of Stacy Kuzinski, and she'll be represented by Attorney Christine Tree. And this is a continuation from last month. The board did visit 48 Chapel Street recently to view the property. And, you know, if there were any questions, we asked and the answers were provided. And there was a couple of comments, but that will come out during this meeting. Okay, so Attorney Tree, would you like to begin? And if you have to leave, just let us know.
It's okay right now.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for checking in. So my client, the applicant, is here, of course. I have a letter that I will give to Mariella and a copy to each of you, just following up on the items from the site visit very briefly.
Okay. I'll read this into the record.
Briefly, it says that after the site visit, we wanted to point out certain things that we were going to address. The entrance steps that needed marking to make sure that they were noticed. For a step are going to be marked with contrasting tape or other means so that they're clearly indicated, so that there's no misstep there. The horseshoe-shaped driveway would be one directional with markings to indicate the entrance and the exit, so that we don't have--so we have a good traffic flow. Maximum rental period would be set at 21 days. And then guests would be required to comply with a set of rules for the stay. And my client did the set of rules, which is right here, generally geared towards good behavior, no property damage, no disturbance of neighbors. And I am going to give the original-- As I said, Mariella, for the minutes. We had addressed the special permit criteria during the original application, so I think that we're both happy to answer questions, but I have nothing further to add at this time. And again, we're looking for the special permit to operate the Airbnb as a non-- and confirming that it's okay within the definition for that to be non-owner-occupied. And because technically, this is a non-conforming structure in that the front yard setback's a little too shallow, the special permit for the conversion to provide for a different use, Airbnb rather than single-family home.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Tree. If you noticed, I was writing, I had my notes here, and you answer every question in your presentation right here. So, and those are the items that were brought up during the site visit on Chapel Street. And I'll just read them down very quickly, as this now is presented as a document, and it's a public document for this meeting. And this is the rules of stay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before you read it, because I do have a question on one of them, the rules that we--
Why don't you let me read them first, then you can bring your question up, and we'll answer. Minimum primary renter age is 25. No more than 12 occupants at one time. No extra overnight guests. Maximum rental, 21 nights. No pets. Minimum drinking age of guests is 21. No smoking or vaping inside the property. No drug use. No fireworks. No parties. No use of the fireplaces. Quiet hours are 10:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. Zero tolerance of rude disruptive or disrespectful behavior. And this is a reminder, it says, "Security cameras are located on the property," and they're also located at the entryways into the facility. And I believe they're on timer, so are there motion lights? Correct.
There's motion lights, too, yes.
And it's really to pay homage or heed to the family and friends that live in the area, because it is a residential zone. I'll just address two that's not on here, but I had heard some feedback during the week from people saying there's going to be weddings, reunions, et cetera. That is not in the plan. And that has not been requested or submitted, so that's really a non-issue for this board to be looking at. And David, you--I'll ask you, the representative of the city, what's your question?
My question is, why did you increase the number of occupants? Because when we did the site visit, you said 10, and you mentioned the number with bedrooms, et cetera. How did you come up with 12?
I thought about if babies were going to be there, if they had a pack-and-play or something that they wanted to bring and have the baby stay there. And the couch in the living room is really large as well, so I accounted for a couple extra in case that came up.
Okay.
Well, just following up then. You have 12 occupants at a time, but not all 12 would be staying over? Or possibly, yes?
Yes, possibly, yes.
And you did have, I remember on a site visit, you do have adequate space to house that many people. But the thing for clarity, it really be--we'll call it one family. There won't be multiple families there at a time. So if I went, I could bring 11 of my family members. But no other non-related parties would be in there in attendance at that time. Correct?
I mean, I--one thing I was thinking of is like a group of friends coming. I mean, they're not related to each other, but, you know, like several-- For me, it was thinking of like a mom's weekend, or people coming to ski together that are of different families, but--
Okay, so they wouldn't all be related?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, they would still function as a single unit? There would be a primary responsible party, who's the renter, and is responsible for the behavior of all persons there?
Thank you, Counsel. Okay. I'm going to ask board members if they have any questions.
No, this answered all the ones we had on site. Yeah, so I'm good.
Okay. And also for clarity, the three members are Mr. Ante, and Mr. Cornet, and myself on this case. Mr. Haglen was not proud of this case. Okay, David, anything?
I don't know if it's a question I should ask at this time, or as a condition. If we pass it, was the pile of metal that was in the back area that was available-- that was open? I know the applicant said they would get rid of it, but I just would like to make sure that it's taken away before they open their Airbnb if we vote in favor of it.
All right, let me rephrase your question.
Okay.
Ms. Kuzinski, that pile of metal that's in the back, do you plan to remove it and when?
Yes. I don't have an exact date. I was definitely planning on moving it before anybody paid to stay there.
So that's what I was saying. That will be removed before you house any guests?
Correct.
Before the--would it be removed before the occupancy permit?
Correct.
Okay. And we'll put that in as a condition.
Yeah.
Okay, David, are you okay with that?
I'm very happy with that.
All right, thank you.
Especially where we talked about children. Yeah, I mentioned children going out and--
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay. And we've gone through this before, but I'm going to do it quickly. There are no other city officials in the room tonight. So are there any abutters that have any comments or questions regarding this property and the use that she's proposing, the Verbo or Airbnb? Be it known that there are no abutters. Are there any interested parties who would like to voice a comment?
I'm just curious.
Name and address, please.
Sorry. Martin Gray, 205 Woodland Ave. Is that where the Hunter's Farm was?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I walked by there all the time, and I saw something going on, although I didn't know what it was.
Yep. That's Mr. Hunter's granddaughter.
Oh.
Yep. It's a well-known location.
Yeah, I walk all over, so, you know, I know--
Okay.
--things happen and--
Oh, thank you.
Just trying to get more involved with the--what's going on around town now.
Excellent. Anybody else have any comments, questions, et cetera? No comments or questions? Okay, David? No?
No?
I'm good.
Nothing? Do you want to consider moving forward with this tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then do I hear a motion?
Motion to move forward on the application for the Airbnb.
Second.
Motion to close the hearing first.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to close the--this hearing on the Airbnb first. Motion to close it? Motion to close it?
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, I'll retake your motion.
All those in favor.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous. Have your motion again, the vote?
On the application for the Airbnb--
Yes.
--of Hunter Farm.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
None? You want to have any conditions? I think you want the condition that the debris, metal debris, et cetera, will be removed before the occupancy permit is issued. Okay?
Yep.
And I think we can just add the condition, the rules of stay will be the condition that they will adhere.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So all those in favor of granting this with the conditions that we have so noted, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No opposition? Unanimous vote.
Yep.
All in favor? As Attorney Tree knows, that we have 14 days to write the decision. Generally, we get it done much sooner than that. And once you get it, then there's a 20-day waiting period. So if anyone does want to appeal the decision, so they have the right to do so. And once the 20 days lapse, you'll receive notice that it's be timestamped, that it has been approved. And then the responsibility is for you or your attorney to record it on the year, your deed in the registry. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, the next case. Half my blocks. I'll take the new one.
Yeah, I think so. Have Dave on.
Yeah. Dave, I'm going to ask you to--you will be the third member on this next case.
The Rock--
That is for the Rock Street. Okay? Okay, the next case before the board. As Attorney Tree, first of all, state, I don't have the denial letter. There's no denial in here.
As you know, there's circumstances around--
Yeah, so I'm just going to try to paraphrase it, then open it up, okay? All right, the next case before the board is on behalf of Kristoff Chartier, who is the petitioner and the owner of property at 20 Rock Street. And it's more specifically identified as parcel M22-1-21, and it's located in a single-family residential one zone. The application is for the individual to construct a one-building, two condominiums on the parcel. And the application also addresses two driveways, and not adjacent driveways, but in different locations of the parcel. So that was denied because there's a request for a special permit. The use is allowed in the zone, but it needs a special permit from this board. So I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Tree, who's representing Mr. Chartier. And the presentation is yours now, Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My understanding, just to clarify, is that a two-family use is allowed by right in this zone. But we did need to, in addition to having the two-driveway special permit, have it clarified that this qualifies as a pre-existing grandfathered lot that has at least 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage. So there's a request for a finding. I am going to say right out that we got the final plan today. So there are materials that I'm going to give you that I apologize have not been shown to you before, and will be forwarded to Mariella by email. I'm just going to connect to the display for the PowerPoint.
We did before technology, right?
Oh, I know. Well, I always think, you know, that hopefully I'm going to do the presentation a little more listenable. But thank you. Sometimes, not always so much. Okay. Good, good, good.
While Attorney Tree is preparing her presentation, just one clarification I want to make, too, is because people sometimes talk about parking requirements and an access regress driveway. This is not for the parking requirements in terms of four spaces. The lot is adequate to handle four spaces. This really is, if it's a grandfathered lot, and a request for a special permit for the second access driveway, it's not for the number of parking. It meets number of parking requirements.
Yeah, we should have five. It would be four required. We should have no problem going to four. So my client has brought five copies of the recently drawn plan, and if you could hand those out to the board.
Yep.
Kristoff Chartier's the owner. He acquired this property pursuant to an RFP from the city. This was the site of the former Russo manufacturing plant, which was later known as the Heine Milk. And what happened was there was a factory on this site, as well as several outbuildings. It was eventually taken for taxes. It was--everything was demolished by the city. It turned that upper lot that you see on the plan into one lot, and then sold to Mr. Chartier at RFP. We had originally approached this as possibly looking at dividing the lot into two and putting a single-family dwelling on each lot. However, we are about 250 square feet underneath the area for that. Even if we could get around the--or address the issue of whether we have adequate frontage, we thought the better way to proceed was to do this as a two-unit condominium, given that the use is allowed and it is within the district. Again, given the timing, I apologize, this is a little less formal than I usually do. First, I want to address the request for the second driveway. So this is a situation where the ZBA may grant a special permit to vary from the parking regulations, because it is going from a non-conforming use, which was a factory, to a conforming use, which is a two-unit dwelling. And we do think that this dwelling will function best as if it--the two units faced separately and had yards that were dealt with as two separate yards. So this will be a driveway in each case that will meet the criteria, except for the fact that there are two of them. Only one is allowed under the parking regulations, except for the special permit. Oh, good.
On this drawing, is it's--unless I'm misreading, it shows one driveway?
So this shows two driveways. You'll see one very short one up at the top here.
Ah.
And then you'll see that very long--that much longer one on the other side. And the location of the building, I know I would normally put it in the middle of a lot and then split the area between the two. We don't need setbacks. And while, again, as a 5,050 square--50 square feet of frontage, square foot lot, we don't have to meet setbacks, because that's part of the regulations that are imposed afterwards, we're trying to present something that is as much in conformity with the zoning regulation as can be. I--if the applicant wanted to speak to the effect on utilities, that would be another issue, because of course, the longer we bring the utilities in, the more expensive the project. So that does also play into it. But this property is in the area of three residences on Branch Street. The entrance would be on Side Street, and then, of course, on the dead end on Rock Street. And if we go to a little bit more of a close-up there, you can see how the proposed driveways would run.
So is the--are the two condos together?
It's one structure.
It's one--it's one structure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is it a first and second floor type scenario, or more of a townhouse?
My name's Kristoff Chartier, 282 South Road, Templeton, Mass. It's two stories, so one unit would face Rock Street, and one unit would face Water Street.
That would be my question. Are you going to have two separate addresses, one for Rock Street, one for Water Street?
It's going to be up to the postal service or the city engineering department to determine that. But it would be two separate entrances. That doesn't necessarily dictate what the address is going to be. And the postal service can just as well put a box over here servicing both units.
So are the--the way it's set up, I know you have enough for parking, but is the parcel for parking on Water Street going to be basically for one condo? And the parking considered for Rock Street, is that going to be for the other condo?
Yes. So although it's one building--
Right.
--one unit has the short driveway, and the other one has the longer driveway, and it can see it turns a little bit so that there's a parking area right there.
So the parking area you're addressing for the second one, is that what's located? I'll call it, it says 20.8. That's right. So if you want, if we looked at Water Street's the front, the other one would be in the back, right in that corner.
But it would be facing Rock Street, if I understand it. So the front door for one is going to be facing Water Street, the front door for the other will be Rock Street.
Right. So one doesn't have to cross onto the other's property. Trying to keep the two owners as separate as possible in the belief that that will keep them happier with each other, so.
Mr. Chartier, you had your hand. You have--want to make a statement or clarification?
It's already been clarified.
Okay. So I need a clarification now. I'm looking at this building. I'm going to use your chair. This is the building. Here's Rock Street. Here's Water Street. Now, you said the entrance is going to be on one on Water Street and one on Rock.
Correct.
So they won't be like, if you look at a, I would call it, two-unit condo, that there's two doors in the front. You know, it's like 19 is here, 20 is here. It won't be like that. So 19 would be here, and around the back would be 20, is my example.
Mm-hmm. Or 19A and 19B, if that's what's appropriate.
So my question is, why did you choose that approach instead of both in the front? You know, here you go into this, we'll call condo A and condo B. Why did you choose that instead of--why did you choose the A and B this way instead of A and B facing one street, Rock Street, or?
For me?
Yes, sir.
We did one of these on Greenwood Street. It was also an RFP with the city a few years ago. And that one was a duplex, and the only choice was to face it to Greenwood Street with two units, with two doors facing Greenwood Street. And what they did is it was one address, and they called it Unit 1 and 2, or A and B, I don't remember which.
Yep.
In this case, since we have an opportunity, because there are two streets, it seemed to me more in--more like the rest of the residential neighborhood to have one family being facing one way to the street with their own driveway, one family going, facing the other way to the street with their own driveway. And the city already put a fence on two, one and a half sides of the property. So with very little fencing, we could make it so each person had their own-- So with very little fencing, we could make it so each person had their own private yard, and there is enough room in the yards to, you know, use the outdoor space. I thought it would be more attractive for the neighborhood and also for the potential buyer.
Okay. So that, you raised another question for me when you said the yard space at center. So if we're looking at it, we'll call it the Rock Street area is quite large, you know, with the driveway. Now, would that be the area designated, we'll call it, for Unit B? And then the smaller area that borders Water Street for Unit A? Or could they both use the whole parcel?
The first.
Okay. So all this will go to Unit B?
Mm-hmm.
And the part on Water Street, up to the parking area in the back, that will just be for Unit A?
Again, because that will be more like a function of a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
And thus make, uh, living together for two-unit owners easier. If they don't have shared yard space, they don't have shared maintenance of that yard space, or worries about who put in the wrong type of flowers, so...
And that was sort of the thrust of my question because, you know, I know there are people here interested in, you know, how is this going to interact? That's what I was looking for. So now we'll go to snow removal.
Mm-hmm.
And how do you plan to handle snow removal, Mr. Schardier, on this property? Or whose responsibility is it going to be?
Well, I'm proposing to build these and sell them. So it would be the, it would be being sold as two separate units. So each owner would be responsible for their own snow removal and their own driveway.
So will they, actually, are you going to request that they form an association?
Yeah. I did it, I did it on Greenwood Street, and we had to, I think I got all the paperwork, all the legal paperwork put together, and then once the, the units were transferred ownership at closing, it's part of the closing documentation that now they're responsible for taking over that legal condo thing, and it's all recorded with the register of deeds, just like you would in any condo association.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, this, for, I guess, my own benefit, I know a lot, a lot of condo associations, they take care of the grass, take care of snow removal and stuff like that, but your documents are going to specifically state that they're responsible for snow removal? What about, like, grass cutting or anything like that? Their responsibility also?
For their half.
Yep.
That's why, I mean, it would be nice to put it in the middle of the lot as we, as Attorney Tree suggested, but I didn't want to ask for, or forgiveness on the setbacks, and that's the only spot where it meets all the setbacks in the neighborhood. So one yard is going to be bigger than the other, but some people like big yards, some people don't. So I, with, with a little bit of fencing, they'll be completely, completely separate. So it can be written right into the documents that they're responsible for their own half.
So it will be clarified in the document.
Yep.
I'm not clear on how you're dividing this. Could you, could you come up and show me how you're dividing, you can write right on, how you're dividing this, this lot for, say, A and B?
It's not set in stone.
Okay.
But what I'm thinking is the city put a fence, uh, I, I think it goes on this whole side. I don't know if there's someone in the neighborhood here that might know better than I do, but, but I was thinking of putting a fence here.
Okay, across here.
Yep.
Yep.
And then another one here.
If you put one there, then I thought this was the turnaround.
Yeah, around the driveway.
Okay. So you, you would basically, all right, and so this would all belong to, I'll call it, Water Street?
Yep.
All right? And all this land will be for the person in Rock Street?
That's what I'm proposing.
Okay. I'm just asking, I wasn't clear where you were dividing the properties, okay?
No additional fencing is being proposed on that large parcel?
No.
Just, because I know there's a wooden fence goes through them like that, and that's a large parcel, and you'd be sort of dissecting that with the driveway. But there'll be no additional fencing other than the wooden fencing that's up there currently? I mean, except for the ones you've just mentioned right there?
That, at least not in this proposal.
The property owners, when it's eventually built and sold, may want to construct something different. It would be up to them to come to the building department or the board as necessary. But within, within the HOA agreement, where the use of the two parcel, two halves of the parcel would be completely separate, each would be responsible for their own maintenance. They're also responsible to the other party for having completed their maintenance. So if it were necessary, if one side were not completing the other, their maintenance, the other side could compel them to do so. But each party should be able to physically perform their own maintenance, just as a single-family dwelling would.
Is it going to be a typical HOA where the outside of the building is common space, and they're responsible for the inside?
It, it would have to be, or it wouldn't be a condo.
Oh, yeah, that's where you're...
Yeah. So, so the structure, the exterior structure. However, all utilities would be separated, so...
I'm kind of looking again on the, the way the houses would be built and where the, I know I can see your exterior design, but I'm trying to figure out if, if A comes all around where I'll say B is, then where, where will be the, the two doors or two exits?
Actually...
You know what I'm at?
So this was the representation of the exterior of the structure, and you can see the main door on one side. And then if you want, I think that it would be duplicated on the reverse, right?
Yeah, I can show you on the plan, Mr. Schardier.
Yes, please. Go on. I'm having trouble visualizing, like, where your two doors, because if this is split...
Yep. One door would come out to that driveway?
Okay.
And one door would come out to this driveway.
All right. Now you need a second egress, right?
I'm just going to note there's a second pair of sliders. There's a pair of sliders, so a second door.
Where, but on here, would it come out on A's property? Where would...
No, it would come, see how both doors are on the same side?
Both doors are on the same side.
So on each side, you would have two doors. One is a main entranceway, the other one is a slider door.
I, I understand that, but when, I guess maybe on that...
How are you going to have a slider door on the second floor?
You see what I'm saying is where you kind of drew it in?
I see what you're saying.
It's, I'm kind of having a hard time picture. If this is half, you're going to, I guess I need to know what that...
This is not, these are not construction documents. This is just a concept.
All right.
So if the concern is that there's two egresses from each unit, I mean, that certainly isn't going to, not going to get a building permit without that.
Right. I was just trying to figure out where they went for, on the drawing that, that you had, because safety is one of the issues that, of the...
It probably would end up being out each gable end. There's, there's particular codes about egress, but without, without trying to figure out them with the floor plan right now, you'd have to, you'd have to come out some, A would have to come out somewhere on A's property, and B would have to come out somewhere on B's. So this would end up probably having to be a fence here, and you'd have a egress there.
Okay. So you might have to, are you thinking coming over here so that B would have the property?
Well, if, if this, let's just label this, you can, so we're talking about the same thing here. If this is B?
Yep.
Um, then B's egress 1 would be here, and egress 2 would be here. Two B, one B. If this is A, then egress 1A would be here, and egress 1...
Okay.
One, one, uh, 2A would be here.
Okay. See, I, I had these as two halves. You're going lengthwise. I was going lengthwise to cut it in half.
And I think they, too, the big issue, and I think...
Do you understand what I'm saying? I, I was looking at, when I drew this line, I was trying to figure out where that would go here, but not, that's fine now. I understand the way this is setting.
And your point was well taken that you can tell us roughly where it's going to be, but when you apply with your, your construction plans, the building commissioner will definitely tell you you need two.
Correct.
And he'll make sure they're in the right place.
Correct.
Yep.
And, and right now, it doesn't, it doesn't behoove me to do construction drawings until we know if this is, proposal can be moved forward.
So it's going in this direction.
Thank you for that.
And it, just to redirect the board, the, it's not a special permit for the two family, the two families by right. It's the two driveways.
Correct.
Yep. Um, I just, to contrast, this was the original thought to divide the two lots so that they were equal in size. It is, of course, preferred by the petitioner, but it would require the variance on the square footage. I did look also potentially at the infill lot regulations in use of those. The only reason I mention this is if the board finds this plan unpalatable, that's certainly, we'd, we'd love to revert to one of those. But the plan as presented is the one that we thought was most in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
That's correct. And then you could run into issues of common ownership.
Right. So I do want to, just make sure, um, address the common, the grandfathered lot provision next, if the board's ready to move on. So your zoning ordinance is very particular. It relates somewhat to MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, but it's a little different. It says that if there is a lot or parcel of land having less than area and frontage requirements that was in existence as of the time of the adoption of zoning and has at least 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage, then it remains a buildable lot. And if it only became a non-conforming parcel through later adoption of larger dimensional requirements, then that would be the date that I looked at. Now, I'm going to say that, because we've been waiting for the plan, there is one piece of research that I want to follow through on. But I believe what has happened here is we had an increase in the dimensional requirements after the original adoption of zoning. So the original adoption of zoning, as far as I can tell, was December 1970. And I did call the city clerk's office for clarification. That was confirmed. I did put in an inquiry to the city solicitor's office. They haven't received that back yet, just because it seems very late to me, but that is what the zoning ordinance says, December 9, 1970. What I've put together for you is a table following the ownership of parcels through time. So this is the 1948 plan drawn by the Russo Brothers Manufacturing Company, and it shows these, what will eventually become our lots, marked 1, 2, 3, and 4, um, held by Russo Brothers at that point in time. And then we have the three lots in front, while they are owned by, uh, some relations are not owned by Russo Brothers Manufacturing in 1948. But what I'm looking at in tracing the title back is these parcels, where they held in common ownership with this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, or that one up there. I'm going to hand out the table that I put together following the ownership of these lots. There you go. And the summation of it is this. From 1970 forward, the front three lots were never held in common ownership with the subject parcel. That has been true. However, that one at the back corner right there, which is 25 Rock Street, was held in common ownership at the time of the adoption of the zoning ordinance, until it was taken starting in the 19, starting in 1978 for taxes, and then sold in 1983 to Mark Montville at IRS tax auction. And just so the board has a printed copy of this 1948 Russo Brothers Plan, that's that looking right there. So...
What you just referenced with the IRS tax, that would be what's noted as House 2, number 2?
Um...
Up in the upper right corner?
No. It would be Orin A. Bory at Ux.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Because the parcel, House 22, is incorporated into this locus, so it's all part of what is currently before you.
Thank you for this.
Welcome. So there are two reasons why I think the common ownership does not matter with that parcel in the corner. Number one, that parcel in the quarter adds nothing to the frontage of this parcel. All that it owns is that little tiny sliver at the end. And as you know from the zoning ordinance, if we have frontage, it had, on more than one street, it really has to be the whole thing on the street. So the separation of that parcel really did not deduct from the frontage. So it didn't create any nonconformity. It also existed separately prior to the adoption of zoning and was acquired separately by the owner. This is the second reason. In 1983, there was an A and R plan done for 25 Rock Street, ascertaining and confirming that this was a separate lot. And as you know, under an A and R plan, you have to have adequate frontage at the time the plan is approved, or you don't get the A and R endorsement. This was done in 1983. The piece of research I would like to have but don't have is a copy of the zoning ordinance from that time period, um, showing the dimensional requirements. But I take the A and R plan as showing that, uh, that dimension, which you can see is 33 feet, which is the only frontage that parcel has at that time, was adequate to meet the zoning requirements. And that therefore, at whatever time this zoning district started requiring 100 feet of frontage, it was subsequent to the separation of this lot. And that therefore, the locus is a minimum 5,050 square feet of frontage lot. The frontage, um, this is just a copy of the table that you have before you. This is the A and R plan that you were given, and that is the terribly displayed original plan. But that measurement on the Water Street side is 94.42 feet of frontage. So we are within five and a half feet of having adequate frontage. We also have, obviously, more than 50 feet of frontage to be, to fall within that grandfathered lot provision. The total square footage of the lot is 12,387 square feet, so that is well above the 5,000 square feet for the grandfathered lot provision. So for that reason, you know, we're asking for a finding confirming the grandfathered status of the lot. I'm not going to say this is in opposition to a denial. As you know, we have a, a situation going on where, um, things are, we, we need to do a little coverage for the findings that are necessary from the building department. I'm going to, I'm also going to say the building department is now first in receipt of this title search and will, and tomorrow... this title search and will, and tomorrow will be in receipt of that, uh, document plus all of the underlying deeds that will accompany it. In the table, just so you, uh, understand my legal scratch, there is a, there are two numbers under each owner, and that is the book and page number at the registry of deeds. The left-hand side is the date of the transaction which changed the ownership. So, um, we are asking that the grandfathered lot status be confirmed by a finding, special permit for the second driveway. And otherwise, just thank you for your time and happy to take any questions.
One question, on the factories that were there, they were woodworking factories, I believe?
That's correct.
And I think there was also some finishing work that was going on there?
I think so, yes.
Has there been any testing of the soil or any test drilling?
What I, what I do know is after the city took the buildings down, there is a substantial foundation that underlies a portion of the lot that couldn't be removed. Are you aware of any testing done by the city prior to sale?
I'm not aware of it one way or the other. But there's, the city's intention was to clean up the lot and prepare it for sale, so I guess I was assuming that it was ready for sale.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that's the city's intention, but there must be some documentation somewhere that addressed this. That, did the city do it? And to what extent they did it? You know, and needing certain, you know, the DEP guidelines of what they are, or certain levels. But I do know one of the parcels, uh, one of the factories that was down there was the FWL. And I know most of their finishing went on up in Ashburnham, but I know products were brought down on Rock Street at one time, but, I mean, I'm going back almost 50 years, but certain contaminants don't always go away quickly. So I think, uh, I'd like you, if possible, uh, because you're gonna be providing a doc, additional document to in the future, uh, if you could do a little research regarding the city and to what extent they performed, uh, Site 1, or just, you know, a quick study, whatever they did, so we'd know what really happened on that parcel. Because I think if, uh, Mr. Tradya was looking for financing, uh, and the financial institution would probably request the 21E, you know, study on that site on the parcel that they're going to, because if they grant it with some contamination, now they're also liable at the same time. So, and I don't think Mr. Tradya would want to incur that kind of liability, you know, and neither would the, uh, potential buyers want to buy if there was contamination there. So I think we can clear the whole thing up in finding out what the city did, you know, and there's documentation.
I'll make an inquiry with the mayor's office and see what the process was.
And I mean, if they don't remember, if they know who the, uh, company was that performed it, that's their, that's permanent files. Those are permanent files that they'll maintain.
I, I did write up the special permit criteria. Would you like me to review that in?
Sure.
Dave will be back in a minute.
Dave will be back in a second.
Okay. And reviewing the special permit criteria, which is again, just for the second driveway. First, the proposal shall be, so to be located in the neighborhood and shall be compatible with the neighborhood character. So again, uh, we're looking to have this operate as much like a single-family home as possible. And the, uh, surrounding neighborhood does, uh, contain a, a large number of single-family homes. So having a separate driveway facing a separate street so that each day the two owners and anybody driving by looks at this property, it's gonna look like a single-family home, so we think it's compatible. The proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. Rock Street and Water Street, as well as Branch Street, are of course clearly marked. Rock Street is a dead end. By separating the driveways to two different streets, it's gonna look no different, um, again, than a single-family home. And you should have on each driveway only the single unit's traffic coming in and going out. The proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading and unloading products, materials, and equipment. So this will provide, um, on the Water Street side, I believe we'll have a two-space driveway. On the Rock Street side, there will be two space, two spaces and additional parking as needed, but the two spaces required per unit. The proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation with proposed use and disposal of sewage refuses or other waste products and methods of drainage of surface water. As, so this is going to be municipal water and sewer hookup, um, and therefore, uh, and, and then household waste will be, uh, handled by municipal services. I do think your question about, um, what the address would be might be relevant to how the trash pickup is handled. And so we can clarify that, um, with the city engineer's office or DPW. And if it's going to be, both pickups are gonna be on Water Street, um, then we would need, of course, for each unit owner to be able to take their cans in and out. If we can manage it on either side, which is what, for the purpose of treating it like a single-family home would be preferable, for the purpose of the guy who has to walk down that driveway with the cans, maybe not, um, you know, then it would be separately handled. We don't anticipate there's gonna be an, any unusual groundwater that wouldn't be handled in any way different from a single-family residence. The proposal shall not cause, constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion, flood noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights, or visually offensive structures or sight features. There is, of course, going to be construction and the usual noise surrounding construction of the dwelling and the driveways in specific. That should be limited in time and in impact on any, uh, part of the neighborhood. And of course, would take place within work hours set by the city. The proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butters, vehicles, or pedestrians. Again, we have some, uh, construction going on. Given the large size of the lot, we should be able to park all construction vehicles off-road during construction, thereby alleviating any issue on the neighborhood. Other than that, it's just going to be a single unit entering and exiting the traffic, the normal traffic flow. The proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this, uh, chapter. So, um, we have the intent to encourage the most appropriate use of the city and to regulate the use of buildings in the area of open space around, around them. So this returns a lot that was a manufacturing lot in the middle of a residential neighborhood back to a residential use. We think that's appropriate. And we think it's the best use at this point in time of the property. In addition, this, uh, by maintaining this project as a single-building project, there will be more open space than there would be if there were two dwellings. So we do think that contributes to the amount of open space in the, in the area. Though, of course, we're not inviting people on for hiking or anything. The proposal shall not have a significant detrimental impact on city services, tax base, and employment opportunities. It's gonna be two single-family households. The proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan or master plan. So, um, this, uh, in, in this, um, proposal, we've looked at the city's community developed master plan. And their mission is to promote housing conditions, um, plan and manage sustainable growth, and to promote economic development. So the vacant lot, um, increases the amount of housing that's, uh, available. Having attended the recent NPRC conference, um, that is held annually by the Massachusetts Regional Planners, Lieutenant Governor's address said, "We are 200,000 housing units short in Massachusetts." This administration's primary, uh, goal is creating more housing. So we certainly think it's, uh, in line with both plans. And then Action Item H1A-2 is to create larger lots, lots with reduced frontage. That is the fact. In this case, it is a larger lot, 12,000 square feet, larger than all three of the front lots, um, and the frontage is reduced. Action Item H2-2 is to encourage the development of duplexes, so that's very specific to this project. And Action Item H2-6 is to facilitate the redevelopment of vacant lots in and near downtown. So this lot is now vacant now that the, um, buildings have all been taken down. We believe it meets these goals, and of course, this is not, uh, in criteria number 10, it's not a zoning map amendment, so that's not applicable. That's the special permit criteria. And, uh, happy to take questions, otherwise I believe I am at the end of both my presentation and my voice, so.
Okay. I understand, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think one of the big issues that I had going through this was determining the common ownership somewhere along the way, and I think your chart clearly illustrates that there was no common ownership, uh, by a parcel, there was no subdivision of lots by the same owner, et cetera. You know, at least when zoning, when it's in effect. You gave, so, the December 1970, we had other information that zoning came in in 73, but never really became active till 73, so it could have been in play in 1970, but that still provides a big window for what's happening. Okay. So I, any questions at this point, gentlemen? Okay. Are there any butters to the present, uh, any butters present would like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters present who would like to speak in favor of this appli, uh, this application? Are there any members of the city to speak regarding this application? Any members of the city to speak regarding this application? Is there anyone he, here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Sir, you had your hand up first. Name an address, please.
My name is Mark Montville, 25 Rock Street. A few concerns, one groundwater. Groundwater is a major issue in that area. The water from that property now goes into my property, which it never did before. I'd like to know how that would be addressed, because now my family who live in that house have water in the basement, they have water in the backyard, which was never addressed. We've asked the contractor that was there originally, he said, "We're sloping it that way, it's tough." Unfair to my property, unfair to my relatives. So I'd like to see how that would be addressed. Secondly, the amount of traffic on that street for a very narrow, 33-foot-wide road is extremely difficult to get in and out of that area, as it always has been. That is a big concern. So that's another thing I would like to see addressed, is maybe a traffic study to see if that is going to be a good area to put that driveway, or would it be safer to put it on the Water Street side? Those are my biggest concerns, because of safety. There are a lot of children in the area that play because it's a dead-end street. So that's a very big concern of all of the people that I know of on that area. The trash, another issue. You're bringing people down, more trash, more pickups, more things that could be unsafe for children. Those are my major concerns, of the water, the safety of the children in the area.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this application?
In Recarier, 21 Branch Street, I'm in a butter. We also get water that we never had before in the backyard, since they've taken down the factory. I am concerned with where these condos are going, if one's going to face Water Street, how it's going to affect our fence that was just put in by the city after this was torn down. As far as traffic flow during construction, when the construction people were there taking, the demolition people, taking down the factory, they were in front of our house, in the middle of the streets on both Branch and water. We had times when the...
And Rock.
And Rock. And Rock, you're absolutely right. Where we couldn't get by. We'd have to wait for them to move. This is a big concern. Is the condo that's going up on the Water Street side going to face Water Street? And is the yard gonna be facing our fence? Or, I just don't know. I'm not comfortable with this, how close the driveway is going to be, what size it would be, close to the off-Water Street side of the property? And just one more thing that is really bothering me, we were told by city officials that this property could not be sold for five years, and if we were interested, they would let us know, when this property would be available for sale. And as we know, this has not been five years. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition, sir?
Sean McGann, 19 Rock Street Garden, Massachusetts. Just like Mark said, um, you know, I live adjacent to that property that he, uh, this family lives on. And we have problems with traffic left and right. One, we have Amazon, UPS, FedEx coming up and down the street. And when they have to turn, they're either turning into my driveway, they're turning onto the, the property that's being spoken about, or they're going into my other neighbor's property. There's like no space to do three-point turns, because, as Mark said, it's about 30 feet wide on both sides of the street. Trash, you know, we all have to put our trash on my side of the property, 19 Rock Street property. You're gonna be adding more trash buckets, recycling buckets on that side of property. Well, where are people gonna be able to park if they don't live there? Say, for example, we have, again, thinking about families that want to come over for, you know, um, social gatherings and stuff like that, there's no place for that. Now, I just lost my train of thought. But again, I, I agree with Mark. There is just no place for anyone to either drive, place more recycling. Um, I have a problem where even with the, um, like the rub, not the rubbish, the branches and the picking up of that third-party, um, trash with the brown bags, they don't, they can't even find where that stuff is, and I've called many times for the rubbish to find it, and they're all peeking down Parker Street to find it, because nobody knows where Rock Street is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this application?
I have one more thing to say.
Yes, sir.
One of the other things that is a major problem on Rock Street, Mark Montville, is the snow removal. Snow removal is a major problem. It's a hazard, because the city has nowhere to put the snow. It ends up in my property, it ends up on his property, it ends up on the property that you've bought. Where does the snow go? There's nowhere to put the snow. There's not enough room. Adding another driveway, right now, the city's putting it on your property, and there's nowhere for it to go. There's a fire there, which I did have a house fire. Wasn't a very big one, but it was hell for them to get there. They had to come in from other streets on the other side, not even adjacent to it. So there is a big concern about the snow and the removal of snow. Would it be the city's responsibility to bring equipment down to remove the snow? Because now there'll be absolutely nowhere to put it with this new driveway. That might be another consideration, maybe put the driveways on the other side, one on each side. I do like the idea of the way that the building looks. It's a great idea. I just don't see it being feasible with the Rock Street side, and I think you have a process of what, 20 feet, 28 feet of frontage on Rock Street?
No.
75.
Is there that much?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of frontage.
It doesn't look like it.
It really doesn't.
Because it, some of the lands, it's all been kind of used, so. Yeah, so it's, it, but on the paper, what Mr. Zock, you know, drew it out, it shows 75 feet on that side. There's almost 100 on the other. There's almost 100 on the other.
Okay. Because where the little house was, was one problem. My house was a separate property. And when I bought it through the IRS, I was buying it from Mrs. Henchy. I did not know that she owed them money. That liquidated her debt by turning over that piece of property, which I was buying from her. But the frontage, which is the consideration for everybody to be able to get in and out of Rock Street, isn't there. There's nowhere, like you said, for people to turn. There's nowhere for fire engines to go down. There is nothing that makes it safe with the amount of space on that road. And that was my only other concern. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you're bringing up some valid points, but we've got things that are co-mingled here. You've got some city issues that they have, but it sort of exacerbates on, you know, this parcel that you're looking at. You know, I mean, snow removal, this is the city's responsibility. Now, if they dump it in the wrong place, they shouldn't be doing that, but--
And it doesn't get removed.
You know, and that's nothing that we can attach to his house of how the city behaves. You know, so we have to look at that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Are there any general comments regarding this application?
I have one.
Go ahead.
The one comment I do have, Mark Montville, is when the city took the property and locked it down, they said that they were going to not sell it and it would be turned into a park. There are no parks in that area. That's what we were told as abutters. It would be a park. I have spoken to the owner and explained to him what happened when he had, we spoke before. There's a foundation under there that was supposed to be removed and was not removed. There is issues with, if that was a park in a large area like we thought it was going to be, it's a slap in our face. It's a house. It's going to be housing. We were never informed that this was going out to bid if somebody wanted to buy it. No one ever told us this.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how the whole process went. But it was generally if a parcel's going out to bid, there's a public printing. They won't call the neighbors as they put it in the document or in the newspaper or wherever they have to. Just like, I mean, your zoning right here. If you're within 300 feet, you'll get a notice. But anybody else does not. They have to either read it in the paper or go where it's posted in City Hall. So I mean, I don't know how the process went on this one or how it was supposed to go. Regarding your park, this is the first this board is hearing anything about that. And I think some issues were brought up tonight between the abutters here that's going to need some more research. And I can assure you, we're not going to make a decision tonight. Because I'm going to ask Mr. Chartier, and I'm going to ask Attorney Christine Tree to research some of these things. Because we don't want issues popping up later after we either deny it or approve it that's going to really cause a problem in the works. So I think some things need to be clarified here. So I'm going to, I have some documents I'm going to read. But I'm going to make the statement that we are going to continue this hearing. Because you need to provide documents. And I think some of the items brought up need some clarification of what's happening. Excuse me. So I'm going to read the documents right now. First one is from the City of Gardner Executive Department. Michael J. Nicholson, Mayor, dated February 27, 2023. Addressed to Mr. Raymond LaFawn, Chair, and members of the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. Gardner City Hall Annex, Room 101, 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. Regarding Letter of Support for C.M. Chartier Application for 20 Rock Street. Dear Mr. LaFawn and members, I am writing in support of C.M. Chartier Contracting's application for zoning relief at the parcel identified as 20 Rock Street. When the city took ownership for this site and demolished the previously existing condemned structure on the parcel, it did so to remove blight, improve the safety of the neighborhood, and help get the property back on the tax rolls. It is for this reason that the city awarded the property to C.M. Chartier Contracting following a request for proposal solicitation. So there was an RFP out there. Prior to this property being taken and sold by the city, the previous owner owed the city $22,114.62 in taxes that had accumulated over a period of six years. This project helps get the property back on the tax rolls, and the city has not benefited since 2011. It is the administration's belief that this application is in the best interest of the city. Respectfully submitted, Michael J. Nicholson, Mayor, City of Gardner. Next one is from the City of Gardner Department of Inspection Services, 115 Pleasant Street, Room 101, Gardner, Mass. Dated April 8, 2023, to Raymond LaFawn, Chairman, ZBA. Copy Mariella Nigron, Administrative Coordinator. Regarding 20 Rock Street Special Permit Application. I have reviewed the application for a special permit for a second driveway and a finding that the reference lot is buildable under Chapter 675-610B. I agree with the applicant that the provisions of Article 6 Density and Dimensional Regulations, 675-610B, would apply to this lot, provided the applicant can verify through a title of chain, a title chain of ownership of this parcel and all abutting parcel lots to confirm that there is no, there was in no fact common ownership to the abutting properties. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a second driveway under Chapter 675-740A. Chapter 675-740 is for relief from parking regulations. The applicant has acknowledged that under the parking regulations, a two-family dwelling requires two parking spots per unit and acknowledged that this requirement can be easily met. Therefore, special permit under 675-740 is not required. As identified by Robert Oliver, City Engineer, the more appropriate relief would be a variance from Chapter 675-720C2, which shows, which allows for a second driveway access for each 200 feet of frontage. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. City Hall Annex, 115 Pleasant Street, Room 102, Gardner, Mass. 01440. And it's 978-632-1900, extension 8050. And the last one is the Engineering Department, City of Gardner, 90 Manker Drive, excuse me, 50 Manker Drive, Gardner, Mass. Robert Oliver, City Engineer. Telephone 978-630-8195. Project Review Memorandum. To Raymond LaFawn, Chairman, ZBA. C.C. Richard Hanks, Interim Building Commissioner. Another C.C., Mariella Nigron, Administrative Coordinator. From Robert Oliver, City Engineer. Date, April 4, 2023. Regarding 20 Rock Street Special Permit Application. The applicant is requesting a special permit under Chapter 675-740A, Relief from Parking Regulations for a Second Driveway for This Project. As the request is for a second access driveway and not relief from parking requirements, relief in the form, in the form of a variance from Chapter 675-720C2 may be required, which allows a second access drive for each 200 feet of frontage, provided that all such access driveways shall be at least 200 feet apart on the parking area measured from the center line of each access driveway. The parcel does not appear to have 200 feet of total frontage. To allow for a full review of this application, I would recommend the board, to the board, that the applicant submit a site plan showing the proposed driveways. I have no other comment on the application at this time. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions.
Attorney Tree, I do have a question that, that brought up. And the reason I ask about the actual addresses. When we talk about access to this property, is it based on the fact that one is coming off of Rock Street? The other one's coming off of Water Street? It's two separate addresses, so does any of that really apply?
So in my mind, no. I also will say that the regulation, and I understand you're receiving communication from the city department. The regulation says relief from parking requirements. Doesn't say which ones. It doesn't say number of spaces. And the provision stating that you can only have one access driveway is within, it's within the section on parking. A special permit is always the preferred relief rather than having a variance because of the, not only because of the restrictive nature of the variance, but also because of the violence the variance naturally does to the zoning ordinance.
Again, the question I have is, is I understand it, and I could very well be wrong, that the requirement around the 200-foot frontage is if you have two driveways coming off of that frontage.
And it's separate frontages.
This is totally separate frontages now. If you're going down that path. So I think we need some clarity in this area of policy.
Yes, the board did hear a case back several years ago. And what it was, as Mr. Cornet described, you had the house facing the street. They had a driveway on the right-hand side. They wanted to put a driveway on the left-hand side. And they did not have 200 feet from the center line either way. But that is much more clear than what the issue is now. It's which side is this, one separate one? And B is a different one on a different street?
If it's helpful, the frontage street is stated to be one continuous street. And if there's frontage on more than one street, it's separately met. So if we look at this again from the grandfathered lot perspective, we have 94 feet on Water Street. We have, I believe, approximately 75 feet on Rock Street. In either case, it's more than 50. So I think it's looked at separately.
Okay. Mr. Cornet, Ms. Ante, you have any further questions or comments?
No, I'm set now.
Mr. Chartier, give you an opportunity if you want to add anything. Or Manette, your last name?
Montville.
Montville. Mr. Montville posed some questions, and I know your agent took them down. But is there anything you want to answer or you can't answer at this point for clarification?
Yeah, I can, I can respond. I don't know that I can fix all of the questions. But if the drainage is an issue on the lot, I'm going to have to do a site plan that's specific to topography anyway to build the house. And I know Rob Oliver, the city engineer, he may be willing to help me look at it at the same time with a site plan engineer to say, how can, if we're excavating anyway, how can we improve the drainage in the neighborhood? That's the first thing I'd say. The second thing I say is that all of the other kind of community stuff you're dealing with, I had no idea of. All I do is look for an RFP in the, in the Gardner News. And I paid 50 grand or something, I forget what it was. But I paid money for the lot as an opportunity to put up what I call, when I pitched this idea, I did it on Greenwood Street, as I said earlier. We made, we made two little condo units out of a blighted lot on Greenwood Street. If you drive down, you can see them. It's not the fanciest-looking condo. But they both sold for, I think, 200 or 220. And this was four years ago. But even in that market, that was really affordable, independent housing. So when you look around at the housing in Gardner right now, and you're saying people buying houses for 600 grand or 450 grand, by doing small, little, these are three-bedroom, but they're little three-bedroom, bath and a half. They're going to sell for 300 or 310 or something. That, I'm on camera, so I don't have to make sure my real estate agent can confirm that. And that's a market six months from now. But the idea is that it's independent, affordable housing. So somebody who can't get a house or in, a first-time home buyer or an older, older person that has limited income can get into something that is nice, clean, new, safe, and they have skin in the game because they own it. So that's the vision behind it, not specific to your neighborhood. I understand your concerns about your neighborhood. But that's the idea of why these little things do make an opportunity for somebody. And then in terms of the snow in the lot, I got, I've been going round-robin with this with the building inspector, with the city development, with the engineer, with zoning, with a legal person. Because I just want to build something on it. And it's, there's all, it is tight and it is non-conforming. And I didn't quite, I assume when I bought it, it would be conforming because the city was putting it up for sale, but it's not. So like where it is on the lot is stupid in a way. But it meets all the setbacks. And everywhere else where I move it, if you play around with it on the, on the little thing, now I'm invading on your property or I'm invading on this neighborhood setback. So it tried to be the most considerate place for it. And I've, we've been working on this for maybe a year almost. So, but if we look at all the options with some of your comments, I don't know that there's not a possibility to carve out a chunk of the land that's on the Rock Street side for kind of a turnaround or a space for snow to be parked or something like that. It is, the way it's drawn or proposed here, it's a huge area. You guys know much better than I do how, how much space is there. I don't know if I can do that.
We would have to do that by easement. And then we would have to make it sure that it doesn't affect the right to the frontage that we have. So we'd need to be at least 50.
I think between the comments made by Mr. Montville, this couple here, a gentleman in the back, and the applicant, you can have conversations outside of this meeting and talk about some of the issues. Now, if you can come to some level of agreement, council will present them at the next meeting. But nothing prohibits, we'll just call it outside-of-this-room conversations. And many a time, we have had that. And there's been very good results. And they, you know, with everybody talking, an idea sometimes surfaces. And it solves the problem or really improves the issue and eliminates a lot of the problems. So I think, you know, snow removal, some of it, you know, that's a city problem. But he's got a large lot. A turnaround sounds like a pretty simple thing. But, you know, there could be some legalities in there, too. But I think if, you know, if everybody's willing, you can get Attorney Tree's phone number, Mr. Kristoff's phone number, and maybe you can have some off-site conversations and resolve some of the issues. I mean, as with the street, not much he can do about that. But if you can solve most of the issues, that'd be great for all of you. You know, and, you know, I'm not saying we're going to approve it, but I think the board has to look at all the issues. And if some of them, I know the mayor is supporting this. But if the issues, in the board's opinion, exceed the mayor's support, then the board will vote it down. But we want to make sure, our job is to protect the neighborhood, the citizens in that neighborhood, the city, and also the applicant at the same time. That's our job and what, however the formula works. That's what we have to come up with, that everybody is, I can't always say satisfied because not everybody wins, but that it's an improved situation and, you know, hopefully it resolves the issue. And, you know, we know we'll solve everything, but we'll see what happens. But you can do an off-site meeting and not a problem. And you can come back. So I'm just going to ask for motion to continue unless, Mr. Chartier, you have some additional comments?
I'm just questioning whether the board wants to do a site visit itself.
Oh, definitely. Can I, can we have Mariella contact you tomorrow or something so we can check our calendars?
She's on vacation.
Okay. And let me ask this question because, you know, it's allowed under the ordinance that when we do the site visit, would you have any issues if any of these people wanted to accommodate? It won't be an open meeting. It would just be a site visit to answer any questions that we have. But would you have any issues with them--
No.
--sort of being there?
No.
So I think that--
I can't even-- I can't even show you what, like I said to this gentleman, you know, in terms of the fencing and stuff, I'm still trying to figure that out. The, the construction plans of the house aren't done yet, because there's no point in doing that until I figure out what the feasibility is. But I can't even show you what we're thinking of for the fence and locations and that kind of stuff.
So I'm going to suggest we can set up a meeting on-site, either at the same time or separately, and we'd be happy to facilitate that, bring a plan, and sit there and kind of cite it on the property and talk about mitigation.
Yeah, I can let you handle, if you're going to do an off-site visit with them, that's fine, but we'll set a date for the Board here.
Thank you.
And try to do it within the next week if we can. Are you going to be around here?
Hey, I'm ready to make a date now, I brought the book. I planned ahead.
Well, I only ask because this man has more vacations than anybody.
Oh, I am the user.
He's tied the track down.
I can't take a sick day without having a problem, so...
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have an answer within 24 hours for you.
Perfectly fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mariella, if you can...
She's on vacation.
Oh, you're on vacation, right?
I'm telling you, Monday, I'll be back in one day.
Okay. I would ask if you want to know, contact Attorney Tree, and she'll give you the date, because we're going to be, we're shorthanded, we don't have a commissioner, and Mariella's going on vacation.
Okay.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to continue this case?
Motion to continue.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, first, any discussion?
No.
Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, we will continue this to next month.
Next meeting.
And we'll get you a date in 24 hours, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, just take a minute to get the papers in order here, and you're free to go if you're related to that case.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you guys.
Mr. Tratt here. At this time, Mr. Haglund will be sitting and taking the third position, and Mr. Anteia will not be on this case, so it'll be Mr. Cornet, myself, and Mr. Haglund. It's the case for...
Hiring on vacation?
No, I got to go to the city council meeting.
Okay, the next case is, it's going to be, I tried practicing on this, Dimitru Okay. It's an application for multifamily of 63 Walnut Street, Gardner, Mass., parcel ID R27-22-20, located in the General Residential 3 zoning district. GR3 is denied as it does not comply, excuse me, Chapter 675, Attachment 1, colon 1, Table of Uses Number 5, multifamily dwelling, City Coto Gardner. The zoning code states that your use requested requires a special permit in the GR3 zoning district. And you have the right to appeal, which you are here, and this was continued from last month, and because the Board asked for some additional information.
Yes, we emailed the information, we emailed you PDFs, we emailed you the PDFs earlier, so you should have them, but I made copies for the Board.
Okay, so they, you have copies for them?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great.
All right, so we're going to continue, and please state a name, a name and address for the record.
Daniel Stroh, 21 Cedar Street. So for context, I know that everybody left is, you know, we are the last case tonight, but for the context, we have done the site visit, you identified several issues, and the last meeting, there were three outstanding issues that you pointed. One was related to the trees in the backyard, one was related to the retaining wall that is in poor condition right now, and one was related to the drainage. We're going to address all three of them, but for, first, we...
You said you have stuff first.
Yes, this is a data sheet for the concrete blocks that we are going to use for the retaining wall. And I'm going to start with this, because we have in attendance our neighbor and contractor, and I'm going to let him speak about this a little bit. Patrick from Summerland Construction, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So he's going to be the one repairing the retaining wall. In essence, we're actually going to be replaced, we're going to remove the cinder blocks and the wood...
Timber.
...portion of it, timber, and it's going to be replaced with the recon system that you have there. I also pointed out his exact brick that we're going to use for reference. The, the wall is about six foot high, so this is within the engineering specifications, but again, I'm not an expert, so I'd like to let Patrick talk to you about the specifics of that, and he's also the one who is going to take care, and we've done some of that work, some of the trees that were dangerous on-site, we removed, but it's going to be more cleanup, so I'm going to let him talk about that.
Hi, I'm Patrick, Jefferson Street.
Patrick, what's your last name?
Daniel. So pretty much I'm going to help him do whatever he needs to get his parking, his new wall, and we'll remove all the trees, whatever he needs to get his approval.
So you're, Patrick, you're going to handle that back wall?
The back wall is pretty much falling down.
It's bulging out, yes.
So we're going to have to dig onto my property, the property, you know, secure it.
Is that existing wall on your property, or?
It's on his.
It's on our property.
But to continue it, to make it, do it right, because he can't just go out the proper line and just build a straight-up wall, we have to come back a good 10 feet onto my property, dig that back, and put the steel bridge tight everything in, so, I totally can help him out through all that.
Well, that takes care of one thing.
And the trees too, right?
And the trees, I'll remove all the trees, because a lot of the trees, on the side part, those are his, on his property, but where that asphalt ends, that's all mine, and it's a good 25 feet, so there's only like eight trees there, I'll remove all those. So nothing falls off there, isn't it?
Okay, so now we're taking care of the trees.
Okay.
And I know that was an issue, he said, you know, if they're not your trees, we can't dictate what happens to them.
Yes.
If it's an agreement between you and Mr. Anteia, then you can take care of that. And, so now we talked about the wall, you're going to take care of those trees, clean it up. Now we move to the important, I mean, the next most important, is the water flow.
So I have a plan, it's the same general plan, but with some additional information on it. We've done some research with the town, city, I'm sorry, and there is a drainage system installed by the city about three years ago, and this is where, again, our position that this is something existing, we are not adding any impervious surface here, we are just make the site better than it was. But the general idea, we have, in absence of a topographical plan, we have added the, the elevations here, starting with zero being the drainage area, so, so you can have an idea. But the idea is that the water today, on this side, as you can see, it goes to, you know, 30, 26, 80, it goes, the water goes down the driveway, the back parking lot, right to left as you look at it, and there is a drop, as you can see here, we actually calculated the drop from one side to another. Again, to give you a context, there's a drop of about 40, 42 inches, of course, I didn't get the glasses, 40 inches from one side, one side of the property to the other, and then in the driveway, there's a drop of about 40 inches, so it's about flat, but there is still. So right now, the water naturally goes towards this area in the middle, and then it makes its way down to the, the catch basin, there's a catch basin here, the city also dig the rectangular area, and it's filled with fieldstone, and this is connected to the city sewer, well, not sewer...
Storm drains.
Storm drains.
Mm-hmm.
So this is existing, it's working well, so what we are proposing, again, we're not adding more, any more impervious surface here, what we are proposing is to create a asphalt berm to direct the water, make sure, our concern here is not the water doesn't go on the, on the, on the...
On the above this property.
Above this property, before it reaches the drainage, so that's, that's the solution we are proposing here.
So where is the berm that you were talking about?
It's right this line, it's, it has a...
That's the left-hand line?
Yes, so it's basically going to be the edge of the parking.
Okay, how, how tall is the berm?
We, we're proposing six to eight inches, here, it's six inches here, depending on the contractor, we can go up to eight.
Have you submitted this plan to either Conservation or anybody in the city at this point?
City engineer.
We have not, since this is again existing, what we are...
Okay, the city engineer hasn't seen this.
We...
He hasn't seen this final plan, it might have been emailed, did you get that?
No, not yet, we just got this...
We just got this today, because yesterday was a holiday.
Okay.
We got this, we just submitted them to the, to you, and we're going to send them to the city engineer as well.
We had, I did have a discussion with him last week, and he did dig up a little bit of information for us, but...
He gave us the plan.
We said we'd be back.
The, the plan that exists with a city about the drainage that was installed three years ago.
I know one issue too, as we, we mentioned last month, about snow removal.
Yes.
What was your plan, over?
It was marked on the previous set of plans, I don't have a copy here, but I'm sure you do.
It's over in here, wasn't it?
It's, yes, it's going to be over in this area.
It's over, is it?
Yes.
It's over here.
Okay, got it. Are you planning to put any, you've got several entrances here in the front, well, two in the front, one in the back?
Yes.
Are you planning to put any motion lights or anything over those for people coming in in the evening?
There is one, again, one of the plans has the proposed lighting, and we typically do, we do this in other projects, we run them on a timer, not on a motion sensor, but if the Board prefers the motion sensor, we can certainly do that.
Also submit the specification of the lights that we're going to install.
It's on this one.
You have some.
It's on this one, it's circuses.
Also the illumination patterns, you submit them.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one, and also it should be drawn within the...
The circles.
Yeah, exactly, the circles where that...
These little circles here?
No, right here, that's the light coverage.
Oh, okay.
The light is right there.
Yeah, yeah, so it's right here. All right, and that really will cover the parking in the back too, is the vehicles that they are...
Yes.
Just for the record, there will be four entrances in the building, I guess they're designed, shown on that, on that plan that you're looking at, not the one that you just received, but the one submitted already, so there'll be like two on each side of the building, so there'll be four.
It's a sprinkled building, so the, the address is not a concern.
Sprinkled?
Yes.
That's it? Interesting, okay.
Yeah, we have to buy code.
It's not now, it will be?
It will be sprinkled, that's what I said, yes.
Really, I had some notes down, and he, this gentleman, and this gentleman, somebody answered the questions, and this thing, I know, on that. Do you have any further questions?
No.
No?
No, I'm good.
Are you ready to do or move forward on this, or?
No.
Hmm?
No.
Okay. So what issues are you looking for, Mr. Haglund?
Potential conditions.
Conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just want to think through them in my own mind prior to, based on the information provided us, to us this evening.
Okay, so what would you like for potential conditions to...
Well, I think what they provided here is, is, you know, good preliminary information with regard to the drainage, but I, you know, I think it really should be reviewed by the city engineer, reviewed and approved, and, you know, things, things of that nature.
Yep, I agree.
Slight concern about the snow storage being here, melts during the day, it's going to flow across, sheet drain across the driveway, parking area, it's going to freeze, it's going to be a constant maintenance issue, potential hazard for occupants of the building, things like that. I, I just want to, I mean, this, I apologize, this, this has gone on for so long, but I, I mean, I would be, if, I would be okay with closing the hearing, but I just, I'm not willing at this point, ready to act upon the application.
Well, I, I agree with you, because I was not going to say, let's go for a vote right now without any conditions. You know, the biggest one to me is still the drainage, that nobody, you know, really has put forth a solid plan, and I would like to see something come back from the city engineer that plan submitted, reviewed, and that. The lighting, you know, that was an issue, you addressed the lighting, but no, I think, you know, definitely we need some conditions on this one as we move forward with it.
Yeah, I mean, it was a little unfortunate, because there was snow on the ground, so we really, I mean, we could see the water situation on the left-hand side of the property, but it was kind of, in the back, it was kind of hard to see the, what the existing, you know, pavement topography was like, so, I mean, this is very helpful, these, these...
Yes.
Elevations that they took, so...
Okay.
Our concern is that, you know, we started applying this in October last year, we certainly want to make use of the good weather and try to do the construction in the summer. Could we, we have no, no issues with the condition that the city engineer approves the plan, could we move forward to a vote with, with that condition?
Well, I think we'd like to just have some more discussion and make sure we get what we think we need for conditions on this. We could, I mean, we can look at closing the public hearing, and then we'd just have a decision meeting, and that's where the conditions would come in at that point. That, the, the decision meeting would be posted, so you would have the opportunity to be there at the same time.
But is this something that we could do within a week, or it's something that we need to do, you know, in another month? The time is, is very important for us, because as I said, we, if, if we start the construction now, and we're going to be ready, you know, in December, then it's not, it's not ideal for a project.
Yeah, I, I understand your, your sensitiveness to the time, but it was also, you know, everything we've asked for were questions and things that needed to be addressed with the original application.
Several months ago.
Oh, I, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just trying to see if you can...
If you want us to move forward tonight, I, I'd be willing to move forward, vote tonight, but you're not going to be happy with it.
No, I understand.
I agree. I mean, we can close the hearing, but I can't guarantee it was going to be in a week or two that we would get together. You know, it would definitely, we'll have a meeting before next month's meeting, I can tell you that.
Okay.
That would be within the next four weeks, approximately. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, I forgot my phone at home, so I, I don't have my calendar with me.
Well, it would also behoove you to get a meeting with the city engineer and get some of these issues resolved. Get the documents to us, so that we can, we'd have something to really discuss and put conditions on.
Okay.
But until you do that, our hands are kind of tied.
Okay.
Yeah, because he, I mean, you addressed the back wall, Mr. Angel says how he's gonna do it. I'm not sure if you need some drawings or whatever you're gonna do on that, but, you know, that, I think, a reconstruction on a wall, that should be submitted back to the building commissioner for review.
It's a six-foot wall, retaining wall, has to be.
Yes.
It's required to be, I think it is required to be stamped as well, so, yeah.
I mean, I know you said it, but I'd rather the plans go into where they have to go, because, you know, after the animal's out of the pen, it's pretty hard to get it back in. So I'd rather get everything taken care of front, get the plan submission to the building commissioner. You and your partners meet with the city engineer, discuss a lot of project with them, present what you've got, and he may work with you and come up with a recommended plan. You know, you can bring that when we have the decision meeting to submit. I would suggest you submit it beforehand, not the night of the meeting, because we would like time to look at this information. Review it and give it some thought versus...
I'm having some intestinal upset over if we close the hearing and start accepting new information.
Okay, we can leave it open.
Do you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if we want to have a special...
We could get a special meeting.
A special hearing notice with posting, I mean, we can do that, but I...
We gotta make sure we get 14 days in, that's all.
Yeah, that's all. I mean, that's, I mean...
I mean, we can do that, but I, my feeling is we're gonna wait three weeks. I'd rather wait till the fourth week and not do two weeks, two meetings in a row. You know, a week apart.
Yeah.
So that it gives these gentlemen time to get their plans together, get them prepared. I think this is a good starting point, you know, for us to get some explanation, because, you know, I'm not an engineer regarding water flows and etc. like that. Neither on the construction, that's what we need for the, also the building commissioner.
Okay, so just one on...
So, I know we, I'm gonna suggest we continue this to next month's meeting, but please have all your information.
Okay, I just want to make a list.
This is not the first time we've asked for this.
I just want to make a list now, so... So we're going to get the blessing of the city engineer?
One is, I mean, I'd say right now, one of the conditions, you meet with the city engineer, and you come back with a set of plans or drawings or recommendations from the engineer, how to handle this. From Mr. Angel's construction company, you'll lay out the blocks, what your construction plan is, how far back you're gonna be digging into that bank. Everything for the construction of a six-foot or greater wall.
Okay.
Now, there was a wall around this back wall, wasn't there? What, back edge of the driveway? Wasn't there a wall along there?
No.
No, it's not.
No?
It goes right to dirt and trees.
But it goes, it goes, yeah, it rises real quick. That's maybe, that's what I'm thinking.
I know one other thing, items we chatted about, and we're not sure who owns them, but there are a lot of fallen trees and debris back there, all along this area up here.
We already addressed that.
That, is that your...
Yeah, I told him I'll take care of everything, I'll clean it up, whatever helps them.
It's the same, it's the same property.
Okay, then I'd like to see something in your package of the agreement, etc., assigned by both parties, and what you're gonna do with that debris back there. Just not verbally say we're gonna clean it. You know, we would like a document that it's between your organization, his company, or your personal property, and what, they're gonna clean it up? And if you're gonna do anything with it, are you gonna do any plantings, grass, bushes, or gonna leave it natural? We just want to know what its end result's gonna look like.
Just want to remind the board that that's actually not our property that we're talking about right now. So it's our neighbor's property, where the trees are and that grainy ground.
That's what I'm talking about right now, is back here, not the wall.
Yes, it's back here, but here it's all paved. So what you're talking about, about the trees and all that is up here...
The edge of the pavement is about the property line.
Which is not our property.
Yeah, it's just worry about your property.
Yeah, but our property is paved, so all this part is paved here. So there is no trees, there is no grass.
Yeah, there's a lot of, if I remember, debris in there, limbs, branches.
Somebody else's property.
Yes, it's...
That's somebody else's property.
Yes, it's his property. But he's gonna clean it, as he's just said, but he cannot take... That's our property, this is...
He'll take care of that.
Yes, he'll take care of this. This is our property, this is where the trees leaning down, so.
All right.
So those parts of them are already cut.
You were gonna talk to the individual about this.
Which is him.
Yes, which is him.
Yeah, he could make contact with me last week. So I said, no, I had a problem, I cleaned it up, I didn't know they were doing anything. It's nice to see something getting done, and I told him I'd clean it up for him, and...
All right, so if he's gonna do this, then I'd like to see something written in writing of what the game plan is. And I'd like it signed, dated and signed.
Identify who's gonna do what.
Yeah, who's gonna do it, by when, you know, if it's a three-month project. And put start and end date.
So I have a technical question as well. So going back to the water, actually, first of all, is there anything else on the list that you expect us to provide for next week, for next meeting?
For this?
No, we are making a list.
Oh, on my list?
Yes. Is there anything else that you... So we talked about the meeting with the town, the city engineer, and get his recommendations, have construction plans for the retaining wall, and then have an agreement with our neighbor about the debris. Is there anything else that you'd like to see?
I'm trying to think, I mean, see, I had down lighting, you addressed that. Drainage plans, you partially brought something in. Parking area not to be blocked by snow. Rear wall, yours, Mr. Angel. And... No, that's all I had on my...
I think, yeah, I think those are the two biggest items, I think.
Yeah, those are the biggest ones, this wall here. And number three would be, how are you gonna clean this up in there, if you're going to? If it's not on your property, we can't dictate you do that. But I think if you want something to look decent, you don't want it looks...
I saw it, it'll be done.
Yeah, like a tornado went through it.
Yeah.
The one thing that you want to make sure of too, is on your drainage plan, that you cover, if you're gonna have snow over that area when it melts, how are you gonna divert that water away from there?
And that's where I think the city engineer will be important, to handle a lot of flows and...
That's all part of the drainage, so you just need to make sure it's all...
So, again, a technical question. If we're concerned about water going to the neighbor's property, would a statement from the neighbor, not a right statement from the neighbor suffice in this matter?
No, because he could change ownerships tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's one of the, one of the criteria is adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use and disposal of surge, refuge, and other waste products, and methods of drainage of surface water.
Yep.
It's one of the criteria for, so, yeah, no, getting something from the abutist only works for while that abutist owns the property.
Well, he signs it, and then he may sell it the next day.
It's real to see something happen to this vacant property.
Yeah, yeah, it's just...
Well, we do too, but we want to make sure it's a good project, it comes out, the city will be proud of, you'll be proud of.
You don't trust me?
I didn't say that. It works better when things are signed and in one paper and moving forward. And memories forget. But I think if we've got everything documented, your project will look good, the city will be proud of it, you will be proud of it. And I think the neighbors will be proud of it at the same time, because now they have to look at it. You know, and you're proposing to make it better.
If you're handling the storm drainage and not creating safety issues, people are not gonna, people are more willing to rent versus if it's a hazard, they're not gonna be there one winter and say, you know, I'm gonna break a leg slipping in the parking lot or something, and that'll be the end.
So we're gonna continue your case to next month, so now you have about four weeks to get it done. Now, and this, these are not new issues, we've talked about these at least three times. But I think now bring the correct players in, everybody's in discussion, and then you can come back and give us the package that we're looking for.
Okay.
So we can say, yes, this is a great project, let's move forward. Okay, do I hear a motion to move this to next month?
Continue the hearing till May. To continue the hearing until May?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continue to May. Okay, thank you. Thank you for this. Okay, I got some minutes or something here.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've got some minutes here of our ZBA site visit, January 21st, 2023, 9:00 in the morning, for case number 2023-01-03, applicant Jonathan Bombachi, Millennium Holding Group, 88 Main Street, Gardner. Property address 163-165 Pine Street. Request for variance for parking at multifamily dwelling.
Make a motion to accept the minutes, dated January 21st, 2023.
Okay. Oh, any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got some more stuff here.
This signature page. She just needs signatures.
Yep, voted, yep.
She just needs signatures.
Anything further before the board?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.